I do believe it's six o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. This is our city council meeting, the last one of the 2017. And so, we're calling the meeting to order and we'll begin. If you, if you will stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Grued?
Dear Lord, Christmas celebrates the birth of your son, the epitome of sharing joy and happiness. Many of us don't know where to look or for or how to share joy and happiness in our lives, especially around the holidays. You must find joy and happiness within yourself before you can share it. Please, Lord, help us find peace and happiness within ourselves this Christmas season and then help us to let it flow, let it flow, let it flow to all of our loved ones, friends, and those near us. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Okay. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We'll have public service announcements. Mr. Gruud, you have some?
I do. City of Canton Hall will be closed on December 25th and 26th for the Christmas holiday. Bring one for the chipper, December 26th through the end of January at the Canton City Collection Site on Ridge Road, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. This will be closed January 1st and January 15th for City of Canton Holidays. January 3 is our monthly dumpster days, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., free monthly city cleanup day with dumpsters and electronic recycling behind City Hall. Cherokee County History Museum, ongoing show Mapping Cherokee, featuring the 20th Century Map Collection of Lat Ridgeway and the Cherokee County History Museum. At the Canton Theater, Wednesday, December 27th, Zootopia, 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. This movie's a dollar. Friday, December 29, Frozen, 10:30, 2:00 p.m., a dollar. Wednesday, January 3, Cars, 10:30 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., also a dollar. January 5, Sing, 10:30 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., a dollar. At the Cherokee Arts Center, February 3rd is the Gospel Fest. It starts at 6:00 p.m. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else have any announcements? Okay, thank you. We have employee accomplishments. Chief Midler?
Thank you, Mayor Calhoun, City Manager. As I always say, we think it's very important to acknowledge some accomplishments from our officers. For first, I want to have Officer Mary Lewis. If you can step forward, please. I think it's important for our citizens to see new faces, the faces of our officers that'll be serving, serving the city of Canton. This is Officer Mary Lewis. The other week she was sworn in as our newest police officer and is about to join our FTO program. She comes to us from the, with experience from the Cobb County Police Department and has her bachelor's degree in criminal justice, so we just wanted to welcome her publicly and let you see her face. Thank you. If I can have Sergeant Tiffany Cromer and Sergeant Mary Turner step forward, please. Both of these sergeants now were promoted on December the 13th. Here recently, they went through a testing process for this position. They were corporals before that. Now they are sergeants and we want to congratulate them. Both will be, each of our, the operations division on our patrol. We have two night teams and they will be in command of both, either each one of the night teams and the day-to-day operations and activities. So we want to publicly congratulate them tonight. Thank you. And I feel like we got half the police department here also on this next one, but these, these next officers were detectives, just received a letter of commendation, so I can have Lieutenant Matt Baldwin, Sergeant Jesse Ray, Sergeant Tiffany Cromer, Officer Louis Salas, Detective Allison Gertis, Detective Tom Priest went home sick unfortunately, and Detective Kyle Smith. They, this group, hard-working group as all our officers are, received a letter of commendation past several weeks for basically solving several armed robberies that we were having in our city since the end of October. Collectively, we had a operation trying to detect who was doing, who was doing, responsible for these crimes. And the officers and along with the detectives over a course of a couple of days, the really good strategic policing and really kind of out-of-the-box thinking were able to figure out who was, the suspects were in these crimes. The other reason they received a letter of commendation is it helped the Cherokee Sheriff's Office solve their robberies that they were having as well, so, and then they had really good teamwork to collect the evidence needed to charge these individuals. But just want to publicly recognize our detectives and our officers that were involved in this. I think it's important because they were able to stop this before any violence was, any further violence was, it went up or someone was actually hurt or killed in this. So, thank you, thankful, I'm so thankful for the hard-working men and women that you see standing here. We've got an incredible team and I just thought, thought it was really, really good for them to be recognized for this accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. We're all very proud of our police department, I can tell you. Okay, Mr. Tim Inlow was, wanted to make a presentation regarding Liberty's Law.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the time. I'm not too loud, I'm not used to speaking on this. Do you need my address for clarification? As far as, I know when I've done other presentations, other municipalities, they always tell me to do my address upfront, or does that matter? No, okay.
He's fine. Carry on.
What I'm about to show you all is basically a proposal in regards to horse abuse. Hopefully, I won't ramble, but it's, in life I was always told, you can allow something bad to consume you, or you can take that bad and try and turn it into something good, which is what I'm trying to do this evening. So when I point over to Lou, you'll know that we had a little technical difficulty earlier today, but I want you all to consider a couple of things. The history of Amber's Alert was basically due to a horrific murder of a child, okay? And when you look at these horrible things, you can allow it to, to really bring you down, or you can say, well, what was the good that came out of that horrible situation? Well, many of the officers, obviously everyone in here knows about Amber's Alert. So the only way I digest what happened to her was, she sacrificed herself to save other children's lives. Then you've, you know, heard of MAD before, I lost a brother to DUI. Again, a mother took the loss of a child, she turned it into something good, everybody knows about MAD. And then another thing, the Susan G. Komen Organization about a sister's pledge to her dying sister about breast cancer. She made a promise that she would do whatever she could to fight the disease. The end result, you know, last year was 2.9 billion in research. Again, you see these constant situations. And there's many other situations in regards to folks taking a bad situation trying to turn it into something good. United Way, Farm Aid, the Worldwide Wildlife Fund, Fur Kids, Humane Society, March of Dimes, Fisher House, and many, many others. So again, it's all about taking the bad and turning it into something good, which is why I'm here tonight about Liberty's Law. And the goal of Liberty's Law is to prevent abuse and harassment of horses while promoting and protecting the equestrian lifestyle in the state of Georgia through education and understanding. Basically, I'm here not for money, not for anything else, but just verbal support. So basically, this is a story about the life of a horse, a horse named Liberty. Liberty came to be through the meeting of a mayor named Bell and a stallion named Triumph. Bell wouldn't load the trailer and ended up being walked an estimated mile and a half to the date. The union would take place on a 20-acre farm in Crab Apple in 1980, known back then as Harrying Farm. Today is yet another subdivision currently under construction called Crab Apple Crossroads. This is Liberty. About 340 days later, she came to us and it was an adventure. She kicked me a few times when I was a kid. And to give you an idea how old Liberty is, that was the last time that Walter Cronkite was on the air. MTV launched when MTV was actually music videos. Raiders of Lost Ark just opened and Rick Springfield was a hot item. And for 18 years, Liberty's mother, Bell, and her daughter Liberty would share everything from grazing the pastures to visitors, and a lot of times kids would come to the property, and Liberty was very fond of children. And then in February of 99, Bell fell ill while we were out of town on my father's funeral. Within 48 hours, she was gone. Even in death, Liberty refused to leave her mother's side. Even though Liberty was now alone, horses are basically a herd animal, she continued to graze on her pastures without any worry for the next seven years. And then she suddenly stopped. And I had some video, we couldn't get the video to transcend over, but basically Liberty now pretty much just hangs around the house. She has six and a half acres to graze and she's terrified, until I did something recently, which was rescue horses to give her some, some confidence. I would ask Liberty's caretaker why she believed she was stopped grazing. Our farrier said something was scaring her. Her veterinarian of over 20 years agreed. And a lot of things that folks don't know about horses, horses have what's called a spook response. It's basically a fight, a fight or flight mentality. It's basically their best defense in life. Shortly after a new family moved in across the road, a neighbor saw their boy shooting into Liberty's pasture, and he would later testify and witness to the aforementioned children laying on the ground with their pellet guns aimed at the pastures where the horses grazed. He would share with local officials. During the same time, we picked up paintballs in the front of the pasture, found colored marks on the pasture pines, and Liberty experienced numerous welts around her neck and face. This, this family would later admit to owning paintball guns. This was the beginning of numerous acts of abuse and harassment, acts that would translate the once peaceful, safe pastures into danger for Liberty. Here was a situation, the video didn't go over, but the kids are screaming at her, trying to get her to, get her to run. Mother Nature made a prey animal out of the horse. There might be some hunters in, in here who hunt deer. Prey animals typically have their eyes on the side of their face because they need to say, who's going to shoot me in the backside with an arrow? That's pretty much what a horse is. It is a prey animal. And the reason they're, they're wired this way is again, to fight or flight. They'll challenge something, but if they are worried, they're going to run. We all know horrible stories about fireworks, we'll all get into in a moment. Fireworks can frighten even the most sensible horse with dreadful consequences. It is a good idea not to let fireworks off anywhere near fields or farms. Most people don't realize how much suffering fireworks cause to animals, particularly horses. Those who really want to have fireworks should think carefully about how it will affect the local animals before they do so, and this was actually an article out of New Zealand. Now here's various stories throughout the country, and I'll just read the, the name of the story. A horse spooked by illegal fireworks dies. You can continue. Horses and fireworks don't mix, that situation here. Fair, fair witnesses, runaway horse spooked by fireworks dies in accident. Plea to curb fireworks nuisance after spooked horse dies. Horses die after being spooked by fireworks. Horse dies while escaping from fireworks. Family searches for a thousand-pound horse due to fireworks, thankfully they found it. Livestock loose in streets, horses were running all around Alamo hitting cars. And this is recent, this is out of, actually, the country of England. Forty-nine horses were injured and 11 were killed since 2010 due to the cost of fireworks. Before they did the broad, you know, everything's pretty much legal in Georgia, it was pretty much sparklers and various things, little things that wouldn't cause too much disturbance. Now it's pretty much anybody's choice as to what they might like to purchase. This was a bottle rocket that these kids had been shooting at newest fireworks. We found this in our pasture right next to where Liberty used to graze. Horses are quite sensitive to sudden unusual noises. In fact, studies have shown that horses are more sensitive to unusual sounds than they are to the sight or smell of something unusual. Normally, this is how you would see a horse graze. Go ahead. A horse should average about nine to 14 hours of grazing per day. That was, that's, you can go ahead, that's fine. Technical difficulties. During this time, the average, there you go. During the time, during this time, the average horse consumes about 30 pounds of dry fords. I actually have three horses myself now, and rest assured, it takes a lot to keep them fed. Liberty spends about 95% of her time on the patio and in the garage, thus we've had to spend more money just to keep her weight. Go ahead. A lot of times, we would have to call the police, the wonderful folks we saw earlier tonight. It's a sad situation when you come to owning animals, especially horses, the police have no teeth when it comes to this type of issue. They can pretty much just come out and say, hey, I got to complain on fireworks with horses, but there's nothing else they can do right now. Across the country, there's nothing else the police can really do to try and educate folks who don't necessarily want to have horses, but they need to understand what they're into. We all know not to yell in church, no disrespect. Go ahead. With all that's been shared, authorities claim we had no evidence, no tickets or warnings were ever written to the offenders. Why? Only within the last six months has Liberty returned to her pasture due to offenders having moved, and we did rescue some horses that are now on the property. Thus, the need for Liberty's Law. Go ahead. Go ahead. Grandfather Clause, conflicts have transpired when a new homeowner or development borders an existing equestrian property. In order to limit such discord, a grandfather clause document should be included with any sale or purchase for the non-equestrian bordering property. Liberty's Law would also be included to educate new residents on the equestrian lifestyle. It is well-known the problem about mixing fireworks and horses can lead to problems. A mayor actually, North Fulton, self- aborted due to stress she was enduring via fireworks from a bordering subdivision. A horse died in Florida, as you saw earlier. So basically, what we are proposing was a three-strike enforcement. The first call would be for police to provide the offenders with a warning and a link to the city's website explaining Liberty's Law. The second call would be a meeting with the equestrian property owner and the offender. A lot of times, amazing things happen when you just sit around a table and talk. And with the local police department as a mediator, the goal would be to help educate and promote understanding between, to the two different parties. Third fine, the third call would be a fine, pretty much it's at the municipality's discretion, but I was saying $500 would be applied to the offending property, and those monies would be channeled to the police department for the funding of equipment or other departments at the local municipality discretion. Go ahead. Liberty's been shot with paintballs, we discussed that. Other horses have been shot with arrows, guns, and some have been even killed. Any such act of aggressions against horses or any type of animal shall be returned to guilty offender with jail time, educational classes regarding horses, as well as fines. I would also encourage offenders' name be listed as an animal abuser. Go ahead. Equestrian zones, we've seen it, but nobody really gives them much weight, much like Amber's Alert. We see it on the highways. What does it say? Oh, be on the lookout for a Chevy with so-and-so look. That's what Liberty's Law can do. Benefits of Liberty's Law, protects horses and other animals from abuse, gives officers the ability to educate while enforcing Liberty's Law, promotes understanding, provides information to property, to property purchase, and I'm willing to abide by the rules and regulations of Liberty's Law, and encourages other horse owners to move to Georgia. Go ahead. Now this is pretty rough, just FYI, a little disclaimer, you're going to see some horses that have been abused. Go ahead. Go ahead. You might remember this story. This was out of Fayette County in 2010. A young person decided it would be fun to drive up to an 80-acre farm, pull out a bow and arrow, and shot the horse three times. Go ahead. This was another horse in South Carolina, somebody walked up, shot it, and let it die and bleed out in the pasture. Go ahead. Another situation in Georgia. Two horses just grazing, a 20-acre farm over in Hall County, somebody pulled up, shot two of them, and one of them died. This one actually close to me. Robbie, I don't care if a horse is worth a dollar or a million, it's the principle of the animal. This horse ran through fencing due to local subdivision shooting off fireworks. He's a $25,000 horse. Ended up where they did numerous therapy, they couldn't get him back on his feet, and they had to put him down. And here are some advocates. We have a lot of support online, which I'm very proud of. Go ahead. I support any action to protect our beautiful horses from any form of abuse, harassment, or neglect, from Robin and Milton. Go ahead. Horses deserve to be treated with dignity and respect, just as humans. Go ahead. A community is judged on how it treats its animals, women, and the elderly. FS Peters. Go ahead. This law should be passed statewide and countrywide with maximum fines and jail time. Ms. Pollador out of Waleska. Go ahead. In Indian River County, Florida, it's a felony to harass, injure, or kill a registered animal. It should be the same everywhere in the U.S. A young lady out of Florida. Go ahead. And this is something to realize, you look back at mankind's history, be it old wars or new wars, and think about it for a second. Horses have always been there for mankind. I mean, even when people were rushing out, out west, when they were selling off tracks, people on their wagges being pulled by horses, this animal has given us so much. Even today, we have mounted police up in New York, Canada, et cetera. Same situation, these horses are always trying to help people. We owe them, I think, thanks, we owe them protection, and I think we owe them Liberty's Law. Go ahead. And then finally, you know, Liberty's Law gives the elected officials, you know, Georgia the chance to lead by example. You know, as my dad always used to tell me, you can either follow or lead, and I believe that true leaders lead. And then finally, I'm a big wimp when it comes to poetry, but I thought this was eloquent. A horse is a projection of people's dreams about themselves, strong, powerful, and beautiful, and it has the capability of giving us escape from our mundane existence. And that's pretty much it. Any questions that you folks might have?
Anyone have any questions? Very interesting, very good.
I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item is a special presentation that we're going to have. This is Mr. Rust's last council meeting. He has served here for four years and done so with distinction. He's been a very important part of this council that has quite honestly been the best council out of my 10 years, over the last four years, it's been, been the best council that we've had. Worked together, we've accomplished a lot, and it's important, he's been, he's been a major part of that, so we appreciate that and owe him a debt of gratitude and wish him well certainly into the future. But now would like, we have a little departing gift for him, a token of, it's not a rocking chair, okay? Linda did not want a rocking chair. So this is a, a flag that we had, had been flown over the city hall and basically one of our parks, and was it somewhere else, Billy? Parks, Adewal River Park, the city hall, and the police station. So we hope that you will hang that on a very strong wall because it's pretty heavy, and that you'll, you'll remember your days here, hopefully fondly for the most part, not every day of course, but most of them. And we really appreciate your service to us. I think what we wanted to do, we'd get, come right down, we'd ask the council to come down as well and, and make a photo. Let's go down here. You want to? No, I'm not going to wear that hat. Okay. John, we will miss you, but we appreciate what you've done, I want to tell you that, we really do. So, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have a consideration to approve the agenda. Mr. Rust?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make one change to the agenda. I'd like to remove item number 9G. It's on your old business, or it could be old new business, whatever. I would like to just remove that item to, and make it, put it on the agenda for January 4th for discussion in the work session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other changes? Ms. Gruud?
I'd like to remove B and C for consideration in January and further discussion.
Uh, nine?
Old Business, B and C.
B and C.
Right. I don't see any.
I believe, I believe we're also going to remove, no, we're not going to remove A, okay.
So B, C, and G.
B, C, and, and what's the last one?
G.
He's already removed it.
Right.
Okay. All right, so B and C.
Right, I want, I want more discussion on those rather than a rushed discussion and an action.
Okay. Do we want to postpone those to maybe February meeting or something, work session?
I'm good with moving those to January.
Well, I was thinking maybe if they, if we could discuss that policy in the retreat, because I think, then the retreat comes after that.
Right. So what? Right, so what if we put it on the agenda for January, if we've got a packed agenda, we can postpone it again and, you know, take it to the retreat.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
And, uh, for our work session in January, uh, somebody may have come up with some bullet points that they want to put on the agenda for work session.
Okay, January agenda. Okay, any others?
We need to add an executive session to discuss a legal matter.
Yeah, we, executive session for potential litigation or legal discussion, okay? Anything else? We've got several things off there real quick, didn't we? Okay, in your agenda package, you have the, um, uh, minutes from the December seventh meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, did not, okay, do you, uh, we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay. Ms. McGee made the motion, Mr. Russ seconded the motion. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay, all members voting for the motion. All right, the minutes in your agenda package for December the seventh, are there corrections to be made?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Yon?
On a lot of, item eleven A, um, I, my vote and, um, Mayor Protem's grant's vote were switched. He had voted against and I voted for.
Right, okay. Does any, anybody else have a, a correction, change? Okay, with that change being made, okay, do we have a motion to approve the, uh, minutes?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. At our ten-minute public input, Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Thomas Weaver, I reside at one thirty-one Old Marriott Road here in Canton, Georgia. Um, I was going to place comment this evening in regards to an agenda item that council has just chosen to omit from the agenda, so if it would be appropriate with council's permission, I was prepared to submit comment, however, if council was going to postpone the matter in regards to the alcohol ordinance, I can just simply wait till next month, or alternatively, if council's going to have a public hearing on the matter, I just don't, I don't know what would be the best option at this point, maybe I shouldn't.
It's really up to you, I mean, if you, if you, if you want to wait until, uh, the work, next work session, it will be discussed somewhat at that point, I believe, so you can do it then, or you can do it now, either way you want to do it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, with, uh, with mayorial consent and based upon your recommendation, I'll just go ahead and submit some preliminary thoughts that I have now so that council can take it under consideration perhaps. Uh, when I, when reading over the ordinance proposal that was pending for the alcohol revisions, based upon the work of the alcohol study committee over the past few months through most, most of the autumn, I saw a few things in there that I just wanted to share, that I thought that as a citizen would kind of be unfair if applied to a business that serves alcohol. And I understand that the majority, if not all, of stakeholders in the study committee are, they're, are themselves license holders or have business, uh, that, that deal in alcohol, but for me, there's just a few preliminary concerns, chiefly among them, and reading directly from the ordinance here that was posted online, um, section six dash eighty-six of the ordinance proposal, uh, says accept as provided under section six dash one fifty-two of the city ordinance, which is pertaining to the mandatory requirement that a licensee check the identification requirements. Section six dash one hundred and fifty-two of Canton ordinance, this is only for establishments that have an on-for or a consumption, uh, onsite license. Um, that would, that, in my opinion, that would be patently unfair to retail establishments that don't allow for consumption on premises, because the, the provisions of section six dash one fifty-two of the ordinance only apply to those license holders that actually deal in alcohol for consumption on premises. So I, I don't believe that would be, um, that would be fair under the law, I think that it should be applied equally to both retailers and on-for establishments. And then secondly, also in view of the ordinance proposal, and this is something too that I'm, uh, talking with members of the Cherokee Legislative Delegation over, that may result in, uh, potential or possible introduction of legislation at the state capitol next month, um, but when I look at section six dash eighty-nine as recommended under the ordinance revision presentments, um, there's some language there such as under paragraph seven, A seven, such as charges or conviction, whereas under, uh, the same provisions, like takes A six above it, it just says conviction only. I don't think that any person in our city should be disbarred or lose a licensing document or a permit or some other type of authenticating permission from the city based solely upon an accusation having been placed without a formal adjudication by and through the courts. I think that if you take away someone's ability to do business based solely upon an accusation absent a conviction, I, I don't think that that's fair, I think that our, our license holders, I know that they're held to a higher regard because it's the council's desire to permit but not promote the sale and, uh, the consumption of alcoholic beverages commercially within the city, and the council certainly has the right to do that, but I don't think that any license holder should be disbarred of their ability to operate their business based solely upon an accusation or an allegation having been placed against them by a law enforcement or a criminal justice interdiction absent a court finding of guilt or a formal adjudication by and through the judicial system. So, again, I, just, just a few thoughts, and, uh, I'll refine it further to see where the alcohol study committee or council's recommendations in the future where this should go, but again, that was just some of the thoughts that I wanted to share with council tonight as it pertains to the ordinance, and again, I was unaware that council was desirous to remove it, but, uh, I'm very appreciative nonetheless.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver, appreciate it. Okay. We are under old business now, let's see, item A, discussion of possible action proposal by Ross and Associates to update Canton's impact fee program.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, staff did present this proposal, uh, to council two weeks ago. Ross and Associates did submit a proposal to update our impact fee program. This is a professional services contract. Impact fee program is a very specialized area of, uh, planning, if you will, there are very limited firms in the state of Georgia, uh, that, uh, have anything to do with impact fees. There's only one other person in the state that I know other than Ross and Associates that, uh, actually has worked on impact fees in Georgia. Uh, that person did the original impact fees, uh, when they were adopted by the city of Canton. We brought Ross and Associates in because there was, uh, some issues with the other consultant in the original work. Uh, we're requesting the city council consider authorization to approve, uh, the proposal by Ross and Associates to update our impact fee program.
And, and their cost was what?
Uh, it was, uh, split out into two portions, forty-four, five, uh, was part of it, there was an additional optional five thousand, uh, which would include implementation manual as well as updating, uh, the computer-based assessment program that, uh, was prepared seven years ago when Ross and Associates did our last update. The total is forty-nine, four fifty, and that would, uh, all be paid by impact fee administrative fund.
When did, when does that, is there, uh, when does that have to be done, is there a deadline on that?
There's not a, uh, state law doesn't require a, uh, specific time or anything in regards to updates for the impact fee program, but since we, uh, did the original methodology and, uh, came up with the schedule of fees and fee assessments, which was, uh, done in two thousand and nine, city council adopted in two thousand and ten, uh, there have been, uh, some changes, if you will, the assessment, uh, that was, uh, calculated at the time, uh, specifically for road programs, uh, several of those, uh, road projects have been completed and are no longer on the books, and we feel that, uh, generally, five to seven years is a good time to go back, revisit, revisit the fee schedule, uh, like I said, uh, since we have had, uh, some road projects that have been completed, come off the books, uh, since the last time, there's been a consolidation of fire services, uh, between city of Canton, Cherokee County, uh, we'd probably need to revisit and look at that since this consolidation has, uh, occurred since our last fee assessment and schedule. Ross and Associates also performs, uh, consulting work for Cherokee County with their impact fee program.
Yes, Wilson?
Uh, Mr. Patton, since I'm the person who asked last time if you had done RFQ, I think I heard you say just now that there's only one other qualified company in the state that does this, correct?
One that I know of, correct.
Okay, and based on the fact that we only know of one other and that this company, um, performed the last impact fee, uh, review, then I make a motion, we accept.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Patton.
Point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, with, uh, this approval, does that include authorization to, uh, execute and sign, uh, contract, if you will, to proceed with Ross and Associates?
Yes, I'm in my motion for that.
We'll reflect that in the minutes, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
There's one thing I, I think we do need to clarify as to whether or not, does that include the, the alternate or the additional, forty-four, five, plus five?
Yes, sir.
So, we're talking about forty-nine, five? That's the amount?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, item B and C are off, postponed. Item D, discussion, uh, possible action on YMCA signage? Okay? Who's going, uh, you gonna have that one? You might as well, right? I think we got a handout on that sign.
If you recall at the last meeting, uh, the YMCA had requested approval of this sign. We wouldn't normally go through this process, but since the city owns the property and we're the property owner, we should approve the change on our property. They had sent out some proposals on sign design, uh, Ms. Thompson, our communications director has been working with them on that, uh, based on some feedback, uh, that I got from council members, it seemed like everybody would prefer to have the city listed at the top, and so what we tried to do was work with them to come up with a proposal that met our brand guidelines, kept us at the top, met their color schemes, and so what you have before you, um, is the latest, greatest proposal that does that. Um, I did have Mr. Patton, uh, and Mr. Green go out and do some measurements on signs that are also in the area. Um, the current sign is at six feet in height, um, the sign at Dunkin' Donuts, because that's the newest thing in that area, is at six feet in height, the sign at Walgreens is at nine feet, oh, sorry, twelve feet, it was higher, um, and, you know, those are the, the newest signs within that area, so to speak. What they did determine was that if the sign placement was moved back so that the edge of the sign is no closer than nine feet, nine inches to the back of the sidewalk, that provides the ability for two cars that are at the intersection to pull out from the YMCA onto Waleska to be able to see clearly of the sign back to the left. So that moves it just a little bit back, so it creates a little bit better sight distance.
Billy, I, I think you may have just answered my question, but that sightline distance means the sign is going to be further back than the current sign.
Exactly, the same location doesn't count for us, the existing sign is nine fifty-nine inches from back to her. Uh, the car, the bullet, stop bar, leaving, exiting, uh, uh, the YMCA site, uh, has clear sight vision, second vehicle also has clear sight vision in front of the sign, there is a power pole that does affect a little bit of the vision of the second vehicle, but they can't pull out in traffic until the first vehicle is out of the way.
After our last meeting, I pulled out of there just to look at that, and it, I can't remember though if it was a yield or a stop sign, although I did stop, is there a stop sign there or a yield sign?
There is a stop bar that's painted, uh, across, it's a ride-in, ride-out.
So if you stop there, if you stop there, you have clear sightline.
Correct.
To everything coming, okay.
They just can't place the sign any closer to the road, it's gotta be nine feet, nine inches.
Can't be any closer.
From, from the back of the sidewalk, correct.
It can't be, so it can't move, well, if it works, if it works, it works.
They can't move it any closer to the sidewalk.
Yeah, but you can't, you could move it further back toward the YMCA, but you don't need to.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McGee, you have something else? Oh, okay. Uh, with all due respect, I'm not sure what the measurements of any other signs in the area have to do with whether or not this one meets our current standards or not. If it meets our current standards, we ought to approve it, if it doesn't, we need to know that.
At, at eight foot height, it does meet, uh, the current standards that are in place.
Okay, that's all we need to know. Any other questions?
Again, I think I brought this up before, because we worked on that seven-hundred-page document together, and this is one of the things we talked about was the lighting, are we perverting our own rules by allowing LEDs under a Plexiglas, whatever? Because it's not truly backlit, or is this what we want to be?
This, uh, it would be, uh, an internally lit sign, and, uh, city attorney, uh, after discussions, uh, with city attorney, with the LEDs being covered and it being classified as an internally lit sign, it, uh, would be in compliance with our, uh, regulations.
No way, shape, or form would this be called backlit then, is that right?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
It would be very similar to you having an LED-style light bulb in your home, as opposed to a traditional light bulb. It's gonna function just like a traditional backlit sign, it's just a different style of bulb inside. It's not like a dot matrix-type message board sign or anything like that, it's truly just the light system.
So in the future, we're not gonna have problems because of this?
No.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, anyone? Is this acceptable to the council?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Mr. Russ seconded that, uh, Mr. Yon made the motion. Uh, any other comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion, thank you. Discussion of possible action on moratorium for new permits until March thirty-first, 2018. Mr. Russ?
I think all of us have this one-page document, and I commend our city attorney for making it one-page, because sometimes lawyers make it ten pages when one works, so, thank you very much for that, but I think that's pretty self-explanatory, that's just exactly what we're trying to do, we're trying to slow down growth along one forty and flat-stop it for a few months until we can have a chance to look at it, and the retreat is coming up, that will certainly be an opportunity. There's probably not a lot we can do to solve the width of the road or the road issue, because it's a G-dot problem, but we can certainly try to figure out what we, as a city, can do along property, along that one forty that affects traffic on one forty. So this is probably the best and only way we have to deal with this situation temporarily. Hopefully, something will come out of the retreat or discussions in work sessions that will be something we could implement as a ordinance. So I, I would like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, other discussion, I, uh, I have a little bit of anxiety about, uh, that this only affects annexation, okay? It does not affect any new developments that may or may not come up that would require, uh, I guess, a zoning change, or maybe even not a zoning change. Uh, and, uh, somehow or another, I, I felt like it probably needed to And somehow or another, I felt like it probably needed to include any new zoning for multiple single-family or multifamily units as well. But, you know, I mean, you know, if somebody wants a one-house permit, that's one thing. But if it's for multiple single-family units, like a subdivision, or for multifamily, then I think it's ought to apply, whether it is annexation or not.
Could I change my motion to include that?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's get some clarification on this first.
The multifamily would come before you anyways as a conditional use permit, that process that we already have. The only thing I can think of...
But we would not, but they would not, they would be able to make application for multifamily, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
The only, in my mind, the only thing in that corridor that you're going to see would be if a developer who currently owns land or has purchased land in one of the master plan neighborhoods in there comes back and said, "This is the pod we're going to develop." Is that a fair assessment, Mr. Patton? And so you could have a situation where, for instance, you have a pod in Great Sky that was planned to have X number of homes. They may not need rezoning. Are you trying to get to the point where you're not going to allow the pod to move forward until this is done? Or are you saying that if there's a change in the master plan, that would come before?
I said new developments, not existing ones for which the master plan has already been approved.
Okay. I just don't think we have any land in that corridor that meets those criteria.
If we don't, that's fine, but just hope we don't. Sure, okay.
Mayor, the moratorium may be redundant, but I think it's something that will send a message and that it's something we should do so that it'll give us time to analyze the situation there. And I also don't think we should deter an already-approved pod from developing, but anything new, a new permit, annexation. And I'm the only one up here that lives in the area, and it's getting quite the nightmare. All different times of day, there's no one particular time of day that is worse than others. It's a congested area, it is a two-lane narrow road, and it's dangerous. I think we owe it to our citizens to take some time and do some studies.
Well, you've got three thousand units almost that's already been approved, and you can keep building right and right along right now. Okay? So those are okay, but any new ones, and that's what I was trying to expand the moratorium as opposed to limit it in any way. And, but, you know, if you're satisfied that the annexation ban or moratorium is all we need, then I don't have a problem with that.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. McGrew brought up last time that she would like to see us conduct the city traffic study and a growth boundary re-review. Will this give us enough time for that, or would we wait until the end of March and decide to extend it?
I personally don't think it'll give us enough time, because I think, I think we're gonna have to hire someone, a transportation company consultant that knows what they're doing, and take a look at that entire corridor. And it'll take us several weeks just to get that process done, when you advertise and solicit proposals and select someone to do that. So it's, my feeling is probably not going to be long enough. Couldn't always be extended, though, if you see it's too short. But by the time they get it worked, I guess it's gonna be six months anyway.
If it's limited to annexation, I think you can make it longer. The three months, ninety days is sort of a general rule of thumb for moratoriums, because there've been some court cases that say that's okay. But that would only apply to permits and things like that where you might be depriving somebody's use of their property. Nobody has a right to be annexed. So you're essentially just saying, as a matter of policy, we're not gonna do any annexations on 140, and that could be longer, I think, without any problems.
Right now, the way it sets up, from a logistical standpoint, if somebody did come before the city with a request to annex before January one, it wouldn't be heard by the Planning Commission until February. It wouldn't be heard by council until March. So technically, you're really only buying yourself a couple of weeks with the March thirty-first.
But I thought they couldn't even submit?
They wouldn't be able to submit, but you wouldn't be able to decide on it anyways until March.
But if they didn't submit until after March, then it would come before the Planning Commission in March, and then we would not hear it until April.
March thirty-first, it would come before the Planning Commission in May, and it would come to the council in June.
Right, so there would be nothing done until after March.
Be nothing done, it wouldn't be heard until June.
They couldn't even submit, is my understanding.
That's great.
They couldn't even submit.
Just one point of clarification. The agenda item says March thirty-first. When I prepared the moratorium, I did it at the meeting date in April, so I think I said April, whatever the date is.
First Thursday.
Because if you did March thirty-first, you would have to decide at your second March meeting whether to extend it or not. So it's, the agenda topic is different than the actual moratorium.
First Thursday in, you said the first Thursday in April, which is the fifth?
The fifth.
Yeah, that's why I put it in there.
Yeah.
I think we're ready for a vote?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Are we gonna leave it at?
We're gonna leave it the way it is. That's probably the, do you agree? Sandy, do you mind?
I'm curious what Mr. Yon and Mr. Goodwin think about it. I haven't heard from them. Do they, does council mayor think that we should restrict development in pods that have already been approved?
I don't think anyone suggested that at this point.
Okay, right, that's what I think, too.
That's unfair.
So just on new annexations?
There's a new annex, well, actually, just on annexations, period.
Anexations, period.
Great, that's it, thank you.
That's what this does. And so, one other clarification. When you say annexations and you're talking about the corridor of 140, are you also talking about roads that spill into 140? Would that also include roads that spill into 140, so?
The moratorium is north of Riverstone.
Okay.
So that would be any property north of Riverstone.
North of Riverstone?
Parkway.
Through, to Pickens County? Or where?
Yes, would have to touch the city.
We'd have to be contiguous to the city limits.
It'd have to touch the city anyway, I mean, but yeah, I mean, again, because it's annexation, it can be broader, but rather than have to, this is what happened with development issues as well. If you start trying to restrict development permits, then you gotta start doing all the what-ifs. With annexation, there was also a lot of what-ifs. Are we talking about annexing over here, it's just easier to say north of.
Now, this would also include Faycon Road, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything that theoretically would flow into 140 would be affected.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second. Mr. Goodwin, you have something?
I was just gonna say, I was just trying to figure out if we were going to just annex the new properties or if it was going to be, I think that was the answer, the ones that are already on the books.
Yeah, this just prohibits the application for new annexations in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion now. Let me ask this. Mr. Russ, did you want to change that until April the fifth?
That's what it says, item five.
Mine says March thirty-first.
The agenda says March thirty-first because that's what the initial conversation was about. Mr. Dyer wrote the resolution.
Oh, the resolution, okay.
The resolution is April first.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so whatever the resolution says, is what we're going with there.
We're gonna go with, except there's two dots in there, we should have moved one.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, all members voting for the motion. Thank you. Next item, discussion and possible action on Soleil Advisory Board Request. Mr. Peppers, you want to, it's been changed a little bit, the proposal's been changed a little bit from the last discussion that we had, and it has to do with basically the declarant paying like fifty thousand, correct me if I'm wrong here, Mr. Pepper, fifty thousand dollars up front and then ten thousand dollars per year over five years into a reserve fund to be used to pave the section near the new guardhouse, which right now appears to be in pretty good shape and will last a while, so they don't wanna waste money on repairing something that's already in pretty good shape until it has five years left in its life, and then they'll pave and have another fifteen or twenty. Mr. Augie, Allen?
Yeah. Come over here, put the mic, please. Just for clarification, the cost of repaving that section of road will cost about a hundred thousand dollars when it's done. We have agreed to split that fifty-fifty with the declarant, who will deposit fifty thousand dollars into our reserve fund, and then the HOA will continue.
Oh, okay, I did misunderstand that. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Also, I think there are some signs and so forth that need to be put up, some other stuff that needs to be done.
Sir, I was gonna mention that I met with the Building Department today. Building and Safety Services have signed off on the new guardhouse, so it's fine, it's ready to go. The Planning Department hasn't signed off on it, and it's based on the restriction of the paving, which would be removed tonight. But we will require that before we release the CO that they do place the stop signs at that intersection and the stop bars that were required as part of the initial design. That has to be done. So that's a stop bar and stop sign on Laurel Canyon Parkway as you're exiting at that intersection. There's one at Forest View Court. There's two on the inside of that median area, and then there's one on Laurel Canyon Parkway coming in. It's all in the design that they originally turned in. They'll just have to get that work completed. And then the other thing that has to be done, since they're not doing the paving now, the erosion control will have to sign off and make sure that they've met all their requirements as it relates to the storm drains and all of that, without that paving in place. So that, those parts of our permitting process downstairs will have to be signed off on, regardless of the vote tonight, but they can move forward, having removed that restriction from planning. Does that make sense?
Somewhat. So are we saying that they will need to put up the signs that were required?
Correct.
Okay, and what other items that would be a condition of this approval?
The signs and the stop bars in the road, the actual striping and the stop bars in the road. And then we'll have to make sure that all the erosion control is in place as it is now, that'll meet our standards.
So with those items in place, then we could?
We could approve the CO. We could go ahead and approve the agreement as it is right now, and that will remove that.
Would that be subject to those items?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I just wanted to make it clear that we are talking about the road that was abandoned by the city.
That is correct.
That's the segment that is talked about in here, although it doesn't specifically say that it's the abandonment road.
That is correct.
It's the segment, so the segment is the abandoned, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Me.
Okay. Entertaining motion.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry. Your light's not on.
Oh, doggone, sorry.
Okay.
When will the stop signs go up at Forest View and Laurel Canyon Parkway?
When the developer puts them in. If they want their CO, they'll get them done quickly.
I ask because traffic entering Laurel Canyon heading towards Soleil, if they change their mind, they pull into the place where you would turn around. The landscaping in front of the guardhouse blocks the sightline. I find it dangerous, and I'm not the only person that's noticed it. Tall people, short people have mentioned it. And I think the stop signs should go in as soon as possible, because the traffic coming out of Soleil at this point do not have to stop at all, and they're hard to see.
Well, and traditionally, you wouldn't stripe until after you did the paving, so I'm sure they haven't put the stop lines in yet, because the paving's not in yet.
I said stop signs.
Yes, ma'am, but traditionally, those would happen at the same time, so.
I see.
We will make the developer aware that we're okay with them not paving under this agreement, but they do have to get those in immediately before the project is completed.
All right, anyone else? Do we have a motion to approve the proposal subject to the items that Mr. Pepper's outlined?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Russ made the motion.
Have some, have some.
Ms. Wilson, seconded that motion. Any other discussion of that? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, all members voting for the motion. Thank you. All right. Okay, next item is item 10A. Discussion of renewing the demand services agreement with Atkins North America, Inc. Now, this was, this item, although it was on the agenda at the last meeting, it was moved to this session. It was not for a discussion at the last meeting, so I would assume we would not be actually voting on it at this meeting. Go ahead, that's okay.
Yeah, all this is, is a renewal of a contract that was signed back in 2014. It's a demand services, there's no guarantee of work, there's no monetary value associated with it. All it does is, if we need some work done, we can go to this firm, tell them to give us a scope of services and a price, and flat-out negotiate with them and move things along, you know, rather quickly. Atkins has done Old Ball Ground Sewer and I think the Edoor Trail under the demand services.
Okay.
And just as a follow-up to your previous conversation in terms of the traffic spec, I mean, they do, that's, transportation is one of their forte's, that you could just ask for a scope from them, and you don't have to take it, you can negotiate with it or do whatever you want.
Right, right.
This doesn't need to be approved tonight, then, for sure, right?
No.
Thank you.
And then the next one is Brown and Caldwell, same situation?
Same thing, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've done the infiltration inflow studies.
Yeah, anybody have any questions about that? Okay, and the next item, discussion of issuing a request proposal for engineering services for the expansion of wastewater treatment plan.
Yeah, this is more of an informative thing, you know, we've been through all the projections and see where we are. And as you can see, this is different than the demand services. We are soliciting proposals for this project, because it is a pretty substantial project. The timeline on it is, you know, probably advertising in January, looking at about a two-month period to receive proposals, basically awarding or issuing notice to proceed in May of 2018. Design would be complete eighteen months, about November of 2019. Advertise, you know, Senate DPD for approval, advertise for construction, probably begins construction in May of 2020, and about three-year construction project, then complete in April of 2023. So it's a, takes a little bit of work to do something like this, and like I say, it's, the RFP does in no way guarantee that we're gonna issue an award or contract, move forward with the project or anything like that, then we're under no obligation to reimburse costs for preparing proposals or anything like that. It's strictly at our discretion what we wanna do.
So are you going to solicit by RFQs or RFPs?
RFPs, yeah, it'll be one thing with a sealed cost proposal.
Are you going to pre-qualify these bidders?
No.
I mean, the proposal?
No, we can do that during the proposal phase. It's a large enough project where you're gonna get a lot of the major firms, been doing this for thirty-something years, and they've got a pretty good handle on who's gonna be submitting the quality work that they do, and...
So is this proposal, while it, in essence, would be a statement of qualifications plus...
Plus proposal, yeah.
A proposal, does it include a fee?
Yes, it will include the design fees. Since the actual finished product may differ than what we have in the design development report, we have not asked for a cost to do construction. report, we have not asked for a cost to do construction services that would be negotiated after the design was complete, so we can actually see what we're, we're building.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about those? Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
So, I just want, so I just let, we're going to move forward with advertising on, like scheduled for the twelfth of January. Thank you.
Discussion of the sidewalk signs outside downtown area. Mr. Yon?
Thank you. This was brought to my attention, this issue, by a business owner in Prominence Point in the public shopping center, that she was informed that her sidewalk signs were not allowed under our city code sign ordinances, and she had contacted Steve Green, and he informed her and gave me the relevant codes, and it is not, we are, but we do specifically allow them in the downtown area. And I am thinking, I just brought this originally, had it put on the agenda, so we could, I could just inform and let everybody think about it till our next meeting, but I was also contacted by another business owner when he saw that this was on the agenda in Marketplace, and he was, he informed me that this is really negatively impacting his business during the Christmas season, so I'm wondering if we might even consider suspending this enforcement until we can discuss it later. But I'm, my, my thinking is, this is the sort of thing, somewhere in the back of my mind, it seems like when we were discussing these ordinances, or somebody was discussing this, we had to include downtown because those are public sidewalks. And my thinking is, the shopping center sidewalks are not public sidewalks, so that's was the reason we didn't include them as allowed. So I'm just wondering if we need to take a look at the ordinance, or, I think it's good that it's come up now because it shows that our code enforcement is actually being proactive and being able to get to things they weren't able to look at before, but it's going to bring up issues like this where we, you know, unintended consequences, and we do not want to do anything if we can avoid it to negatively impact our businesses in the city. So...
Obviously, you know, it seems there's a sense of unfairness there, one way or the other, either you, if you don't allow them in one place, why wouldn't you allow them in another, especially in something like a shopping center, where, you know, if, if they adversely impacted that shopping center, the owner of that shopping center could, could prohibit them, you know, and that on the private property looks like to me. But what, what is the, Ken, you may know, or you may know, what is the area allowed on those signs?
It's the central business district.
No, I didn't mean that, I meant the square footage. What square footage on those? Because it's got to be a size requirement.
I don't think it, I don't think it actually gives a square footage.
It's about four square feet, and it could be two square feet. I don't remember the exact square footage, but I don't think it's more than about four square feet for the A-frame or sandwich type sign, and that's what code enforcement had notified some of the folks at Kent Marketplace. They didn't have any method other than the sandwich signs or A-frame on the sidewalk, they didn't have the capability to put a temporary banner up.
Would you get that for us at some point, let us know that, the square footage requirement?
Yes, sir, I'll shoot that out by email tomorrow.
And certainly, I'm, I'm sure it's a standard for, for everybody that, where they're allowed.
Yes, like I said, they're only allowed in central business district currently. And that was in the old regulations going back to prior to 1998.
Not to confuse things even more as you're thinking about it, but the, one of the problems we have is, we have a chart of which districts they're allowed in, and it's only CBD. Planned developments are accepted from the chart because they're supposed to have a master sand, sign plan, and that's what's supposed, so with Kent Marketplace and Prominence, you would have expected the original developer to have come up with what signs would be allowed in there. Apparently, they didn't. So there, there is some cleaning up we need to do on that, some faults you need to do on that, but that's one of the issues there, is right now, that kind of zoning doesn't have any signs really permitted, because they're supposed to have a, supposed to be decided by the shopping center.
Development plan there, sign plan.
Yeah, the staff is working on amendments to the sign regulations. City Council instructed staff to work on that and bring amendments back to City Council.
Do sandwich signs would not count toward the total signage, square footage that a business can have, right?
It depends upon how it's written up, but the A-frame and the sandwich signs in the central business district are not counted as a part of wall signage or that sort of thing. In the current sign regulations, they're described as being allowed as a temporary sign.
And they are specifically prohibited from being out on the sidewalk outside of normal business hours of the business. They have to be taken in every night.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Well, I would move, normally I wouldn't, since I like to have the discussions ahead of time, but since this is kind of the retailer's golden time to make their year, I would propose as an emergency measure that we let, allow them to have the signs through, until we can at least have another discussion or make some kind of action next month at the regular meeting.
So moved.
Yeah, he, he made the motion, and you were saying that?
Oh, a second, a second. You made, you made that motion, okay.
Yes, I move that we do suspend enforcement of that rule for sandwich type signs.
I'll second it.
Until?
Until we can make a final determination, probably the second meeting next month.
Okay, I think we need, we need to, yeah, we need to say one or the other.
Well, it'll be a zoning ordinance change, so we'll have to go through the process, so it'll be more than just next month, but, so that, just keep that in mind, but...
Well, you might want to give them a chance.
I'm, I'm not sure there's a huge risk of letting it go on for an indefinite period of time, those signs have been out there. Yeah. And nobody's complained, so... Yeah, and this was all brought forward by the code enforcement noticing it was not, not caused by a citizen or complaint, so this was just something code enforcement basically got around to, been able to enforce finally, and, so...
Billy, what if you just tell code enforcement not to worry about those sandwich signs for a couple, for a few weeks?
Hey, Merrick, will you not worry about those signs for a few weeks?
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe... Who says government's slow?
Right, exactly, exactly.
Okay. I don't think we even need to vote on that one.
No, if it takes, if it takes a little while to do it, that's good too, because they got after-Christmas signs that might, after-Christmas things they'd like to do, so...
And I'm certain as code enforcement continues to improve, other issues like this will come up that we will deal with as we, as they come.
Absolutely. Okay, let's see, outside downtown, discussion of probation management services contract. Bobby, is that you?
That is me. Just real fast history, just so you'll understand the context of what's going on. In early, around 2000, the legislature created the possibility of having private probation, and so probation management was one of the companies that got started, City of Kent contracted with them. In 2006, they changed the law to require the city council to approve the contract and require, before that, the judges were just signing it, and it became an issue. 2017, or effective 2017, they then adopted some requirements for the contracts. So what's going on now is this contract is just a renewal of sorts, but contains the detail that's now required, and it has to be in place by the end of the year. If you don't vote on it tonight, I don't think there's any issues. They don't have court until after the fourth in January. There's not going to be any probation services being provided the first three days of January to worry about, so I think you can wait. I'm, I'm not overly concerned about that.
So we can put that on the January fourth agenda, but not necessarily for voting?
Uh, well, no, you'd need to vote on the fourth, you don't want to let it go past the fourth.
Okay, so it's been on this agenda, so we could vote on it at that point?
At that point, it would be an emergency, I think, because you, you would have court, and they'd be wanting to put people on probation, and this has a sixty-day termination. I know that the city manager had wanted to give bids that you're going to be considering, so this is really just a, by terms, a sixty-day contract.
Yeah, okay. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Will we be speaking to the probation management services about keeping their sidewalk clean?
You, you absolutely can.
Okay. That North Side Street has really come a long way. It's a lovely area with some nice businesses on it, and I noticed that the probation office is looking a little sloppy with a lot of cigarette butts on the ground and litter, and I'd like to see that taken care of.
The probation office, what, what if you change firms, would that move the probation office?
Yes. Well, it may not, I mean, I guess a new one might take over the lease, but...
Okay.
Well, no, would not move because they do the state court.
Oh, okay.
That's their big contract.
Should I appoint Sandy to go talk to them?
Mr. Page has contacted me several times asking what he needs to do, so I can let him know tomorrow to talk to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Page?
Yes, Jack, I'm sorry.
I'd like to chime in on that as well.
Go ahead.
That area, they don't pay any attention to the signs there, they don't pay any attention to the smoking there, they don't, you know, they just, they just do what they want to do. We've had, I've had several people contact me about their flowers, you know, they're messing up the, putting cigarette butts out, and they're, you know, they're just, just making a mess there, and certainly smoking within the door areas there, and I think maybe, as she said, we need to, you know, get a little bit more patrol.
Maybe, maybe our code enforcement folks ought to go by there and make sure they're not, they're not within certain distances of the...
This happens on a pretty much daily, weekly basis, that's for sure.
Or perhaps we could ask the judge to have one of the community service workers stand out there with a sandwich board sign that says, please do not smoke in this area.
Maybe so, but I'm getting a lot of calls from them.
Okay, thank you. I guess we got that one, Saul. Let's see, okay, city managers' report. You don't have one.
I did want to take a second and just recognize the hard work of our Public Works and Police Department over the snow event that we had earlier this month. They did a fantastic job keeping our roads clear, cleaning up from that incident, that little flurry that we were supposed to have, that dusting on the ground that turned into seven or eight inches. They worked very hard, and, and we actually got numerous compliments from visitors and others that talked about how great our roads were compared to others around us, so I think that's a great statement to that staff's work. I would let the public know that we will not be having, City Hall will be closed on Monday and Tuesday of next week for the holiday and then the following Monday. Additionally, Waste Management will be delayed service for the next two weeks by a one-day delay because of the holidays, so if you get questions about garbage, that's the answer, it's delayed one day for the next two weeks.
Billy, just a little bit of history here, and I think to demonstrate a little bit of progress to you, how many, how many snow plows, blades do we have in vehicles that can push stuff around like that?
We have two large blades, smaller blade, a Polaris that's got a blade, we have three or four.
You've got at least four, haven't you? Maybe five?
And we've had some discussions about allocating some existing public works funds to a new spreader, a larger spreader. We've got a couple of spreaders, the problem that we have now is they're a little bit small compared to the trucks that they're on, and so we're working right now to get some quotes on a larger spreader so that we can get more material out on the road ahead of time. And frankly, that's, that's one of the reasons why we were so successful, we were able to get out and treat the roads on Friday so that they didn't get so bad, so...
Okay. So we have four or five blades and at least one spreader box that fits in the back of the truck, is that, is that the one? We have more than one of those?
I think we have two spreaders.
Two spreaders? I guess my point here is, ten years ago, we didn't have the first blade, none, and certainly not any kind of spreader box, so we've come a long way, and I know ten years is a long time, but it didn't take long, we had our first blade, and then we had two of them, and, you know, so things have, things have improved.
And additionally, I would give some kudos to, to Mr. Hooper in the Public Works Department, because when I started here, we only had two CDL drivers in Public Works, and now I think we're up to ten or twelve, and that makes a big difference when we're trying to get that equipment out through the night.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I will also say that the Public Works have been good about, there are so many limbs down, and I think they must have been working overtime, there's still some down, but they're certainly clearing on, I'm sure as fast as they can.
And that's a great reminder too, that, you know, if somebody does have limb or brush out, they can call City Hall, and, and we'll go out, we'll put it on the service list. It may not be the next day, or it may not be that day, but it's usually within a twenty-four to forty-eight hour. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and the mayor's reported, have one item, basically the nomination of Jeanette DiAmico to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Andy Bonner. I would make that nomination and would look for a second, hopefully. Maybe not.
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, thank you. All members voting for the motion. This is, you know, this is really, this is the last meeting of the year, and this has been a really good year for our city. I don't, I don't lose any doubt, and we've made a lot of improvements, a lot of good things that happened, and I'm not going to mention those at this point, I'm going to save those for the state of the city, but it really has been a good year, and the councils work together, and we've had a lot of cooperation with citizens and committees that have worked very hard to make things happen, so I'd like to thank especially the staff of, of the city, and all the employees of the city, because, you know, we just sit up here and worry about stuff at home and everything, but they do, they do the legwork and make it happen, and we really appreciate it. I'm sorry?
Jack has...
After you, after you.
Okay. And, and the only other thing that I'd just like to say, I hope, I hope everyone in our city has a very safe and happy holiday season here, so, Jack?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I've had numerous comments about how great our city looks, the new lights, I've had so many people come up and say, wow, they're beautiful. And recently, I was at the theater helping out some of the Christmas movies we're having, and we're getting very good attendance on those, but I, there's one area that I would like for us to think about for next year, is we seem to be a little dark from right in the edge of the city to around to Duck Pettit there. It seems to be not have many lights on, so maybe in our budget next year, maybe we could consider doing some more there, but people have been very, very excited about the lighting, looks pretty good.
Absolutely, it gives a real warming, welcoming...
It really does.
We're working on some, some of that. Part of the issue's not the lights, part of the issue in that area is the electric, and so Scott Buckner's trying to plan out some of that for us.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, now I will entertain a motion to adjourn to our executive session to discuss potential litigation.
Mayor, can I?
I'm sorry?
I was looking at the state law about the purpose, I, I know we're used to those three real estate personnel litigation, there's actually a one that's probably more appropriate purpose, which would be to discuss a report that's exempt from public disclosure, because I think that's probably...
The purpose to discuss a report that is exempt from public disclosure. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay. We have, we have a motion? We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay, I don't think, we won't be coming back out for any final vote on anything, okay? Just some informational purposes right at this moment.
Yes, Merry Christmas.